I'd like to welcome everybody to Southbridge Town Council Meeting, Monday, June 2nd, 2025, 7:00 PM, Council McKinnon, Council Chambers. Agenda one, Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is that the United States of America is a republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Two, Roll Call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Lozo.
President.
Counselor Montigny.
Present.
Counselor Shenier.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow. Excuse, all right, Counselor Kelly.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Excused.
Counselor Ortiz.
Excused.
And Counselor Rivas.
Don't know. We have a call. I'd like to move on to the Agenda Item Number Three, Consider and Accept the Meeting Minutes of May 19th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Shenier, seconded by Montigny. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to that document? If not, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to Subcommittee Reports, Department of Public Works, Counselor Shenier.
No report, no meeting scheduled.
Educated Human Services.
No report, no meeting scheduled.
General Gov, Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We had a meeting on May 28th, all members were present, and we discussed Items 11, 20, and 32 through 35 on tonight's agenda.
Okay, moving on to Planning and Development, Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We had no meeting, but we do have a meeting scheduled for this Wednesday at 6:00 PM.
Moving on to Protectors versus property, they did have a meeting, and there are things on the agenda, but there is no meeting schedule, Jack, I don't think.
No, if I could, I do, will be sending out emails to all Chairman over the next couple of weeks. We do have reappointments that we have to get on the agenda, as well as some transfers and clean up the end-of-year work, so I will be reaching out to all the chairs to make sure that we go through those and get all those things in place. Thank you.
Let the record show Counselor Rivas to show. Moving on to Chairman's Announcements, I have no announcements at this time. Moving on to Town Manager's Announcements.
Thank you, just a couple of things. First, we will be holding a public hearing on the water sewer and curbside rates on June 26th at 5:00 PM here in the Council Chambers. That has been posted and will be going in the newspaper for two consecutive weeks for publication. Curbside collection, the curbside collection of lawn and leaf debris has concluded on the curbside, and the DPW facility is now open to collect those belongings for the same hours as last year. And finally, exciting that the groundbreaking for the fire station, our new fire station that has been in works for a couple decades is going to be this Friday, I mean, Friday, June 13th at 1:00 PM at the location on 120 Allen Worcester Street, and that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Moving on to Presentations, we have a presentation tonight, Animal Control Officer role in the community, ACO, Caitlin Jewell. This presentation, there's a lot of discussion on what ACO, what the job is. A lot of people have created different jobs for her in their imagination, and I think we need to forward the information to the public to find out what we actually do under Caitlin Jewell. Caitlin? Welcome.
Welcome. Thanks for inviting me to give a presentation on my job duties. Most of you guys are familiar who I am, but there are some new faces, so I'll just do a quick introductory. My name's Caitlin Jewell, I'm the Southbridge Animal Control Officer. I am the only animal control officer employed by the town of Southbridge. I work under the Police Department, and I have been working for them since October of 2017. Since I've been working under the police station, I've gained some state recognition. I was Animal Control Officer of the Year in 2020. Shortly afterwards, I joined the Animal Control Officer Association of Massachusetts. I have been the Academy Director, education and training is really one of the things I'm passionate about, is to make sure the message of animal control gets to be well-trained throughout the community in Massachusetts. Right now, I serve as the Central Vice President for the ACO of Massachusetts, so I get a lot of resources that are beneficial for the town of Southbridge with my connections throughout the state. So, I just have a short, I say short, it's like two pages, of what the animal control officers, what my position is here, my job titles, and then I also broke down the job title of Animal Inspector. These are two separate positions that I do hold for the town of Southbridge. It tends to get confusing for some, so I hope this is an opportunity I can take to kind of like explain the difference between the two. So first off, the Animal Control Officer, also known as the ACO, is responsible for enforcement of state and local laws and regulations related to animal control for the town of Southbridge. The ACO oversees in care and control of domestic animals, in some instances wildlife. The ACO is a civilian position within the Police Department and does not possess police powers. The ACO is required to perform all similar and related duties as directed. One of my primary roles is that I impound stray animals and unlicensed dogs that are on public ways, so those are like your loose dogs. Hey, I see a dog on Main Street, I go up and I take possession of that animal. Part of that is transporting animals to municipal shelters, trying to contact the owners if found and any identification related to that animal. I provide care to all the animals held at the animal shelter. As of right now, you guys probably are aware that we have been using the town of Oxford, and they do primarily facilitate the care for the animals. There are some incidences, somebody sick or on vacation, that's when I'll fill the role and take care of those animals that are at the other facility. One of my favorite things to do is reuniting animals back with their owners after they've been compliant with the town bylaws. It's required that all dogs are licensed within the town and also vaccinated for rabies. Like the cats and ferrets are the only other animals required to be vaccinated for rabies. Find appropriate rescues, shelters to take unclaimed animals after a seven-day hold. So if I can't find an owner within that seven-day period of time, I have to find a shelter or rescue who has the ability to take on that animal. As we have it in our town bylaws, we do not do private adoptions, and that's due to liability purposes. It also decreases the expenses and veterinary care that we would have to provide to get those animals prepared to go to a home. So, that can be kind of challenging at times. I feel like a car salesman, like, hey, I got this dog right here, I'll throw in a free collar if you take it. Typical average stay for a dog in our care could be anywhere between three months and six months. So even though we have a seven-day hold period on dogs, it takes multiple months for me to find placement, and that's just, I'm looking for a spot that somebody has availability. Part of it is transporting them to rescues and shelters. I have been known to drive up to Nevin Farms, which is right on the state border of New Hampshire, to bring animals to a shelter if they have availability. So I do travel basically all over the state to provide care for these animals. I also schedule facilitate veterinary appointments for treatments, and also sometimes, on the rare occasion, euthanasia appointments. Be on call for animal emergencies or animal concerns from the Police Department and actually from other law enforcement agencies. They might be coming across these emergencies or animal concerns, so I'm available 24/7, seven days a week, 365 for these departments only. So, some of you guys might see them driving around, that's part of my patrolling of the town. I do that once to twice a day on my regular schedule. I also investigate complaints from the public or other agencies regarding nuisance stray, uncontrolled, dangerous, or public nuisance animals. Part of that is issuing 2021D citations to owners or keepers found in violations of dog licenses, rabies control, public nuisance issues regarding dogs, so that's like our leash laws, barking, dogs in prohibited zones. Dog litter complaints, tethering and confinement of dogs, dogs confined inappropriately to motor vehicles. I also investigate dog bites and forward report findings to the Animal Inspector for quarantines. I testify in court regarding citations and dispositions of complaints, so that's if I'm issuing a citation for a barking dog, they want to contest that ticket with our hearing officer. Part of that process is that I'm involved in that process, and then also if there is failure for payment, then I have to go to Dudley Duster Court to file on that and go through that process. Report writing for investigations, investigate and assist law enforcement agencies with animal cruelty cases, and then on that part, testify in court regarding animal cruelty and neglect cases. Inspect, maintain paperwork, issue kennel license applications for individuals who own more than five dogs. This year, there's actually a new kennel license law that was just passed, we're still trying to figure it all out, but this is going to be an increased demand on animal control officers for this town and for the state to do more inspections of kennels. So if you have a commercial kennel, we're going to have to be inspecting those more. Record all animals the department has taken in, it's part of my duty to document every animal I touch, and I have to submit that paperwork and file and document it. Record all receipts and collections of fines, so if there is a boarding fee that's associated, I submit that to the appropriate parties. Transport and handle sick wildlife found on public way to veterinary clinics or rehabilitation clinics for treatment. That is if I have permission from State Mass Wildlife or Environmental Police, that's the only time I can handle wildlife. Investigate and provide a disposition to the town hearing authority regarding nuisance and dangerous dog complaints issued by town residents or by animal control officers. Those are the types of hearings that you guys get involved with, with deeming a dog a nuisance or a danger, and if you guys have been part of that, you know, it can be quite extensive, and a lot of work is involved in that. Attend and speak in town meetings regarding animal control needs. Educate the public on animal issues and resolutions. Distribute donated foods to owners in need, that's kind of like my little secret thing that I do. Maintain and research state laws regulated to animals in the town bylaws. Like I just said, there was just this new law that was passed, one of my things is like just being educated on anything that's getting passed, even like up-and-coming bills that are going to be presented to the state. One of those things is like to be educated on what's going to be coming to light. Cleaning, maintaining work equipment, cages, safety equipment, traps, and vehicles. Being able to know what types of cleaning materials that are needed, that's going to be safe for human and for animals, and the proper disinfecting protocols associated with that. Working for the Town Clerk's Department in regards to dog licenses. Maintain and administer the department's social media, which is responsible for posting found animals in the department's care. Part of our responsibilities, I'm mandated to notify the public within 24 hours of any animals that are in my care, to help reunite them back to their owners. It's covered, that social media covers that little part. It used to be that we would have to post in the newspaper, but not too many people are actually getting the newspaper. Some people do, but most people are on social media now. Enter and maintain dispatch calls when the calls come into the Animal Control Office. So I have a private, not a private, but I have my own line from the Police Department, so I have to enter in the computer of who's calling, what they're calling about, if they're not calling the dispatch center. Provide monthly and mid-year reports to supervisors, maintain yearly animal control certifications through continuing education process. And then last, but not only, any duties, responsibilities outlined under Master and Law, Chapter 140, Section 136 through 147F and/or any additional made under this section. That is the animal control part, like I said, I kept it small, not really. But then the other part is, there's also the Animal Inspector part, and what I also just want to just help educate is that the town of Southbridge, you guys are the ones that are like, we want, you know, this person for our Animal Control Officer, and then you guys submit it to the state saying, town of Southbridge has this person as our Animal Control Officer. The Animal Inspector position, it's actually, you guys make a recommendation to the state, and then the state does like, yes, Southbridge, you have this person as the Animal Inspector. So it's kind of like an opposite type of appointment type of thing, and it's because I'm, the Animal Inspector acts as an agent for the Department of Agriculture, the Animal Division. So I just kind of wrote, the Animal Inspector plays a crucial, crucial role in ensuring the health and safety of domestic animals in Southbridge. This position is responsible for enforcing state statutes and town bylaws regulated related to animal health. The Animal Inspector conducts barn inspections to ensure animals are properly housed, fed, in good health. They also give a general census to the state, like a headcount of what animals are in the state in case of an emergency situation. Animal inspectors are also in control of, rabies control is another key responsibility, including excessive exposure risks, enforcing quarantines for animals that have bitten human or animals, and coordinating rabies testing. Additionally, the Animal Inspector monitors the arrival of out-of-state livestock, assist in disease outbreak, investigations, and submit necessary reports to the Division of Animal Health. So Animal Inspector investigates animal attacks, they issue the 10-day, 45-day, and six-month rabies quarantine, which requires a physical check of that animal after that quarantine period. Issues any contagious disease quarantine advice by the Department of Agricultural Division of MDR. Like right now, I just found out Central Massachusetts is having an outbreak in a certain cat disease, so that's going to be directed by MDR to be on the lookout if we're noticing that. Control and monitor rabies in the animal population. Transport specimens to appropriate locations for euthanasia. Collection of rabies samples and packaging of rabies samples. Report positive rabies specimens to the Board of Health. Perform yearly barn farm inspections for the state, which is MDR. Provide records for all animal bites and attacks to appropriate entities. Maintain appropriate training, continuing education for MDR. That's what I have for both, both job positions for duties and responsibility. So I'm pretty sure, like you were saying, that you guys had some questions, so I did go through, I know I'm supposed to have five minutes, but I went through that pretty quickly. I'm open for your guys' questions in regards to...
Any questions by Counsel? Counselor Shenier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Caitlin, I appreciate what you do for the town with the Animal Control Officer, your services are very well-needed. Just a couple of questions. The Animal Control, your title is Animal Control Officer slash Animal Inspection Officer. You handle domestic animals with very little resources towards wild animals. Am I correct?
Correct. So the role for, I'm just gonna just keep it all together, for Animal Inspectors and Animal Control Officers, our role for wildlife, it's very, very minimal. You need to be licensed through mass wildlife to be, in order to handle wildlife. In the event that there's a public safety threat, like if there's an animal that's exhibiting disease that's a threat to public safety, that's when the role of the Animal Control Officer and the Animal Inspector becomes part of it. If there's an injured animal, that's why how the state law is written, animal on public way, meaning like on the street, also on public property, so if there's an injured animal on the library lawn, I can enact on that. If I pick up any other like instance, like, oh, I should back up, even when I do pick up the injured owl that got hit by a car on the side of the road, I still have to get permission from Mass Wildlife or Environmental Police to obtain that animal, because I'm not licensed, and neither is none of the other, that's not part of the Animal Control position. So we need permission from the state to be taking care of wildlife issues.
All right, let me continue. You handle the domestic animals. Now, in Southbridge, we're getting kind of an influx of residents that bringing chickens on their property, and the complaints are going to come as we get more and more people with chickens. Is that something that you handle, or the complaint starts with you first?
So generally, the phone calls do, or they will come to me because it is an animal, and when you see animal, like, oh, let me call Animal Control. In our bylaws, it's actually livestock and poultry, they fall under agricultural use. Agricultural use is maintained by the zoning board, and they have their own like rules and regulations of what's allowed and what's permitted, and they would be able to answer majority of like the rules for the zoning. So when it comes to chickens in a property that is not zoned for it, the zoning officer is the one that enforces it. There is no state law saying you need to have this for, like for, under animal control saying like you need to have this in order to have chickens, so I, it's difficult to enforce something if I don't have something to enforce with, but our zoning board has that stuff when it comes to livestock and poultry.
Would you handle the complaint that comes in as far as nuisance?
Nuisance, again, that's because it falls under agriculture, it'd be nuisance farmland, which falls under agricultural use.
How about horses, things like that?
I think to help understand the situation a little bit better, if there's a complaint of neglect or cruelty that involves livestock or poultry, that's when I can do an investigation, if that helps you try to organize of what my role would be for when it comes to those types of situations. So if there's like a welfare issue, that's when I can get involved. In regards to your question about what about nuisance, if the zoning officer's like, hey, the nuisance is because of smell, and they go, and they're like, this is a problem, that would be like, let me get somebody down here that could like pursue that as a criminal complaint, which would involve law enforcement.
Okay, thank you very much, and again, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Counselor Rivas?
Just going back to the wildlife, and thank you for your presentation, very important information. So even though you have to get permission from the Wildlife Department, would residents still call you if there was an injured wildlife so that you could facilitate that and you would get the permission, or would residents directly call the Wildlife Department?
So if there's, I enjoy getting those phone calls, like if there's like something, I mean, I can't even begin to tell you in the seven years I've been doing this, like, hey, this is injured over here, I'm like, oh my gosh, I've never been able to do that. Like I've been able to help a lot of animals and just by making a phone call, or it could be like, let me go see what I can do to get a rehabber, or let me see what I can do for that. I think a lot of the frustrations that I come across or the things that I'm hearing from citizens is like, hey, I have a raccoon in my attic, you know, so there's, there's individuals that are licensed, they're called problematic animal control agents, they are licensed by the state to remove nuisance wildlife, and from my experience, that's when I hear the frustrations, and you know, like the groundhog underneath the shed that's causing holes and eating like gardens and stuff like that, that is normal wildlife behavior. It's a nuisance, but it's not a public safety threat, so it's, my hands are tied when it comes to that, but there's a lot of information out there of who you can hire to take care of that. Even homeowners are allowed to protect their property from nuisance animals, however, it's not pleasant, so I can understand why others would want to maybe have somebody else handle that, because you can't relocate wildlife. So your options are, is to dispatch the animal, you can't trap it and relocate it, that's how diseases get spread, and it causes more harm for that animal. So that's the options, or you can hire somebody to take care of that. So those are really limited options out there, so, thank you.
Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Thank you for coming tonight, the presentation was enlightening. So, an animal that would be causing a public safety threat, say a rabid fox, you'd be able to handle that, wouldn't you, or would that be, would you have to call in some state authority for that?
So it's a public safety issue at that time, so that would be something I would be involved in. My experience, training, and hearing all the other stories with rabid foxes, they're really aggressive, so I'd be having help from the Police Department to dispatch that animal. If I can't trap it, yes. I know in the Maria Ave area, every single year, we get phone calls about mangy foxes. The state wants us to leave that alone. It's part of a natural disease that's in there. It's super sad, I wish I could help them, but I'm unable to through the state to help them. I can't put traps out for them, so it's all on private property, so, I'm waiting for those phone calls next month.
Thank you. I just want to say, you probably don't remember this, but when I moved into my house back in, the current house that I'm living in, 2020, I had a, it was in the fall, and I had a fox that decided to make, decided it was, my pool was a nice place for him to sun himself.
Yes, yep, and it was running around in circles, so it was acting weird, and then it got out of the fence, so it was acting normal, and that's when I'm like, hey, I'm noticing something.
You do remember, okay.
I do, I do, because it was going in and out of that, but it was walking around, like it might have had a neurologic thing.
Yes.
So, and then in the event, like with yours, I don't know if you recall, I was just like, if I can't catch it with a net or a noose, I can't put a trap out. So if I'm able to catch it by hand, that's the only permission that I have, and thankfully at that time, it wasn't causing a public, it was acting strange, but it was healthy enough to evade me, so.
But anyway, I do want to thank you for your responsiveness to that, I was very impressed at how quickly you responded, and the advice that you gave me, so thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'd like to say thank you as well, but I'd like to comment on the fact that you've appeared in front of this council two or three times for nuisance hearings at least. You've always been very professional, very well-prepared. You've done a lot of good in terms of helping us to make difficult decisions regarding dogs. Dogs are the catch-all for everything, really, in terms of council business, and I just want to thank you for the professionalism that you've shown, you've done a great job, and the fact that you won that award back in 2020 is a testament to the abilities that you have, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other discussion at this time? If not, Caitlin, thank you very much. You forgot to tell everybody that you were a firefighter also, when the fire was on the side lot, that you jumped out of your truck with a fire extinguisher and put it out. That's under doing whatever it takes for the town of Southbridge, and I'd like to thank you, because my building was approximately 20 feet away. Thank you again, and thank you for the information tonight.
Thank you so much, and always feel free to reach out if you guys have any questions or anything, like I said, it's one of my passions, and that's why I do what I do, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here are no other presentations, we'll move on to Citizens Forum, Agenda Item Number Eight. Are there any citizens that would like to come to the podium and trust the council on any issues that are not on the agenda? There is nobody at this time. Moving on to nine. Vote to confirm the Town Manager's appointment of Justin Raell. Has a permanent full-time police officer for the town of Southbridge, effective immediately, based on the Police Chief's recommendation pending successful completion. pending successful completion of all medical and physical testing as required by the human resources civil service and state ethics training.
Second.
Motion by, senior seconded by Montigny. Counsel, there was favorable, subcommittee?
Unanimous by all present, subcommittee, yes.
Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Town Manager, members of the council, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for having us. Mr. Ryle, who's here to my left, he's currently a full-time police officer with another agency in Massachusetts. He's post-certified. He's been a police officer for about four years. He worked for a similar-sized city in another state for a little bit, so he's very familiar with some of the interesting situations he'll be involved with here in Southbridge. He's got a master's degree, and he lives a few towns away. I highly recommend him. And just for a point of information, I don't think I mentioned it at the PPP, Mr. Ryle is the first hire that we're taking off of civil service called the hybrid list. He's not actually off the new hire list, off a test, statewide test. They now offer, they're kind of trying to modernize, it's called the Modernization Act Civil Service. So they don't, you can't just, it doesn't have to be local residents, one year living here, it shrinks your pool, keeps a very small number of candidates. This expands it. If someone's already a fully trained and certified police officer, we can now hire them, so long as over a five-year period, 50%, not to get too complicated, but 50% of the new hires over five years come off the civil service list, 50% come off of however we choose to hire them, as long as they're fully trained. It's a great move by civil service. It was years in the making, it took about 10 years to get it done. So he's the first and I highly recommend him.
Any questions, councilors? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Would you like to make a speech or something?
Do you want to say anything, Justin?
Go ahead, get up at the mic. Moving on to agenda item number 10. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Mary Lee Panetti. As a permanent full-time police officer for the town of Southbridge, effective immediately upon successful completion of the medical and physical testing as required by the human services, human resource, civil service graduation from the police academy and state ethics training.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, subcommittee? Unanimous?
Yes, sorry.
If I could, through you again, Mr. Chair, Mary here is to my left. She's an outstanding candidate. She's on our civil service list, she'll be a new hire. If approved tonight, she'll be attending an academy in August. We were hoping to get her into one in July, but that's full, so August it is. As far as the candidate, she has a master's degree. She was an LPN, she worked at a hospital, she worked at urgent care, she's highly qualified. She's bilingual and I highly recommend her.
Would you like to say a few words before? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to 11. Vote to extend the appointment of Bill Tremblay as the town's first poet laureate until April of 2026, as requested by the library director. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Here's a motion, a second. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This matter was taken up at the general government meeting on 5/28 and unanimously recommended to town council.
Any discussion on this? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to 12. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Richard Bebo of Southbridge, Mass, as a special traffic constable, based on the police chief's recommendation for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2028, state ethics in good standing.
So moved.
Motion, senior, seconded?
Second.
Town manager?
I'll just state for the record, all the items on this agenda that were, police department items were passed unanimously. So you don't have to ask all the time, just to clarify, but they have all been passed, so.
Any further discussion on Bebo? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Matt Elix of Pasco, Rhode Island, as a special traffic constable, based on the police chief's recommendation for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2028, state ethics in good standing.
So moved.
Second.
Here's a motion, a second, discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to 14. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Jacob McDonald of the Southbridge, of Southbridge, Mass, as a special traffic constable, based on the police chief's recommendation and a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2028, state ethics in good standing.
So moved.
Second.
Here's a motion, a second, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to 50. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment for Kevin Pegault of Charlton, Mass, as a special traffic constable, based on the police chief's recommendation for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2028, state ethics in good standing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion? Not all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to 16. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Jacob Webb of Stafford Springs, Connecticut, as a special traffic constable, based on the police chief's recommendation for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2028, state ethics in good standing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by senior, seconded by Montigny. Discussion? If none, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Chief, I don't know why we need so many traffic constables. I don't think Rosa and Fontaine are going to give up any of their days. And they're there every day. I give them a lot of credit for a couple of old-time cops. Nice job they do. Okay, we voted on that? Moving on to 17. Vote to approve the IMA payment to the town of Charlton for FY24 of $140,403.82 for water from, excuse me, account 610-450-5643, excuse me, 9300. My new glasses are coming in. Town of Charlton MIA payment as required by the MIA between Southbridge and Charlton for water supply.
So moved.
Motion, second?
Second.
Motion, a second, discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you're aware, we do have an interminable agreement between the town of Southbridge and the town of Charlton. The way that is configured is annually, we have to take the total revenue that goes into Charlton from the water pump station into Charlton, and then compute how much the retainage would be. In order to do that, we take the amount of money that was Charlton total, less the millennium power, which gives a total system to Charlton of $713,557. And then it's computed by the percentage, the current percentage that is Charlton, less millennium, is 14.56. So it's a simple formula that we plug in, that IMAs for minor repairs to the infrastructure and their retained earnings. So it's part of retained earnings, the total retained earnings for the Southbridge water system, which is approximately $1-plus million that I provided to the town council last week. So that is the portion that would be due to the town of Charlton.
Counselor Shannon?
To you, Mr. Chair. I don't understand the IMA, to be honest with you. We're sending our water to Charlton and they're profiting off our water. And I understand that it's an agreement that was done some time ago. Does this agreement ever end?
I believe it was a 20-year, so we'd have to revisit. I know Charlton is looking to do some additional work in their system, so they may request us to reopen this. What this is, is, and I wasn't on council when this was negotiated, I don't think any of us were. The infrastructure from the pump station into the town of Charlton is owned by Charlton, not by the town of Southbridge. So the IMA agreement is that any repairs that have to be done on the system, we do not take it out of any retained earnings that we have. That portion is why we give them the retained earnings. So they're responsible for any repairs out of their retained earnings that they keep through the IMA.
If I may continue, doesn't our Southbridge water supply people do the repairs out there?
They, they do the repairs, but this would be charged to them through the IMA.
So if we go there and we spend $60,000 in a repair of our people that do it, we get reimbursed for that?
I'll verify that, exactly how that works.
Because if they own the supply, the lines, I don't know how we end up with that, but if they own the lines, we're giving them water, we're giving them a payment for that water to go in there, they should be paying for our people to go there and do the repair.
They are.
They are.
But they might, Whitewater is our manager. I don't know if that is done by Whitewater's company or our supply.
They may bill them. I'll verify that information.
If you could.
Just, just the, I've always said, you should know the history on this one. I was on the water committee, I handed the check over to Whitewater when we bought it. It's an amazing concept what happened here. This is what happens when you have a bad council and bad deal. We own the franchise for Charlton, we own all the lines in Charlton, we own the water company, and this is the deal we ended up with. If somebody, and there was some things that went on with a former town manager that started here and finished the deal there. But knowing the history and being a guy that was on the council when we bought the water company, this is not a good deal for Southbridge. But since we're stuck with it, but again, when you open a water deal, all the things are on the table. But why we gave them our lines and why we paid them, I still would, could never understand that. But that's what happened. And you can thank the council of that era for doing that.
So one question more. What if we said no?
No, we have a contract. That's a contract. We can't not say no.
We're locked in for 20 years. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And it aggravated me when I got on the council, I found out we were paying them when we owned everything. But somebody gave it away. All right, moving, any other questions? Counsel?
Just a quick question. What year was that agreement or contract signed?
About eight years ago, eight, nine years ago.
Kevin Pegos, was he a temporarily?
Thank you.
No further discussion? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Kelly?
I was just gonna, I was wondering if we could tear off the water.
Let's think about that. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to 18. Vote to transfer $140,403.282 from the water retained earnings account to 610450569300, town of Charlton, IMA payment to pay the FY24 IMA fee and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second, discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to 19. Vote to appropriate $934,715.18 from water retained earnings to the Water Stabilization Fund, number 0845.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, discussion?
Just an explanation of why we do this. So the water retained earnings, typically, if you didn't allocate any money, it could stay in the water retained earnings and roll over to next year and build up that water retained earnings. We had established, well, the council, the one thing they did do was establish a special purpose stabilization fund. So that is the remaining money from water retained goes into our specific water stabilization fund. And then we can allocate out of that. If we had kept it in water retained earnings and recertify it next year, Charlton would get a second bite at the apple for that higher retained earnings. So that's why this is our portion. We transfer it to a stabilization fund to see fit on how we want to spend it locally.
Counsel?
What will be the total in the stabilization fund after we transfer?
I did have that number currently, I don't know what I did with my notepad here. Believe, I gave that information last week, but it's approximately, with this, it would be about 2.6 million in water stabilization after we do this transfer. However, as I explained last week, the TIP project is going out to bid this month. Once we get that, we are responsible to pay a portion of the water lines from Main Street to the TIP project on Foster. And that estimate right now is a million dollars, so we would allocate out of that rather than borrow money and pass it on to the ratepayers.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to 20. Vote to enter into a facility use agreement with the YMCA of Central Mass for the use of the Petrel Pool on four Tuesdays from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, from July 8th, 2025 through August 5th, 2025, unauthorized, town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
So motion, a second, discussion? Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This matter was taken up by general government on May 28th and recommended unanimously.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to 21. Vote to approve the police department transfer request of $500 from account 001210511000, salaries and wages to account 001210558200, prison of maintenance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, discussion? Recommendation, again, was unanimous, subcommittee? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to 22. Vote to approve the police department transfer of $10,000 from account 001210511000, salary and wages to account 001210524100, vehicle repair.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to 23. Vote to approve police department transfer request of $150 from account 001210511000, salary and wages to account 001210571000, mileage.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, discussion? If no discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to 24. Vote to approve the police department transfer request of $3,900 from the account 001210511000, salary and wages to account 001210524300, repair, maintenance, building and grounds.
So moved.
Second.
So motion, a second, discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to 25. Vote to approve the fire department transfer request for $35,000 from account 001220511000, salary and wages to account 001220513000, overtime.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, all the fire department transfers were passed unanimously at subcommittee.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Moving on to 26. Vote to approve the fire department transfer request of $5,000 from account 00122053000, specialized services to account 001220- specialized services to account 001220521000, electricity.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. No discussion, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous, of all present. Moving on to 27, vote to approve the fire department transfer request of $9,000 from account 001220585600, safety equipment to account 001220527100, gear and uniforms.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I guarantee it was not a drone. He promised. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Can't help myself sometimes. Number 28, vote to approve the fire department transfer request of $800 from account 001220558700, parts and accessories non-vehicle to account 001220543000, maintenance improvements of building.
So moved.
Second.
So motion to second, discussion. No discussion, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on, vote to, number 29, vote to approve the fire department transfer request of $200 from the account 001220550200, chemical and lab supplies to the account 001220545000, janitorial housekeeping.
So moved.
Second.
Here's a motion to second, discussion. No discussion, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous, of all present. Moving on to 30, vote to approve the fire department transfer request of $2,500 from account 001220525100, repair and maintenance equipment to account 00122055000, health supplies.
So moved.
Second.
Here's a motion to second, discussion. No discussion, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous, of all present. Moving on to 31, vote to approve the installation, installation of rubble strips and signage in 200 to 300 block of Worcester Street with all costs covered by the United Lens Company, as recommended by the Traffic Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion?
I just want to say through you, uh, just from our conversation at the subcommittee, I think a lot of residents in that area who I've talked to in the past will be happy to see some of this, um, come to fruition. They have been complaining about speeding in that area for a long time. And so, um, hopefully this experiment does help, um, slow people down. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counsel?
Chief, is the Traffic Commission going to evaluate this over time to see if it's a, something that we should consider in other streets?
Yes, if I could through you, Mr. Chair, what we intend on doing when these rumble strips are in place, we're going to put our speed, a speed tracking device in that area that monitors traffic. Every single car that goes by attracts speed, gathers data. We'll do that for a few months and we'll see if the speed decreases. I have to tell you, just by my own experience with these, it's going to force you to slow down, you have no other option. You're going to be bouncing around your car, it's not going to be a comfortable feeling. It's going to be a, a sound you're going to hear, it's going to be a vibration. I think they're going to work great down there. But yes, to answer your question, short version, yes, we will reevaluate based on the numbers.
A useful tool. When I lived in Florida, a lot of the roads had them at the stop signs you came to for about 10 feet. Then I traveled to Annhurst often and they have speed humps plus the rumble strips throughout the, uh, town. My understanding, the rumble strips work better than the speed humps. So I, I think this is a good thing that's going to happen and I'm going to support it tonight.
Any further discussion? Counselor Daniels and Counselor Montagni.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, through you. I'd like to thank United Lens for being a great neighbor. Uh, they continue to come up and, uh, get the ball out of the park over a lot of different, um, for lack of a better term, events. It, it seems like everything that's going on, they're attuned to. And if they can help out, they volunteer to help out. So I'd just like to thank them.
Counselor Montagni?
Uh, thank you, sorry if I already mentioned this, but you, um, did you say it was like 60, 70 miles per hour sometimes that people are going in this area, like when they get caught?
I, I have said that at the, uh, subcommittee meeting, yes, we have had a police officer there before who clocks someone at 70 in the middle of the day.
Yeah.
So it's just, someone's going to get hurt or even worse. So we're trying to avoid that.
Got to do it, thank you, Chief.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Moving on to 32, vote to authorize the payment of prior fiscal year bills for Amazon in the amount of $188.37 to be paid from account 001111454200, town council office supplies.
So moved.
Second.
Is a motion to seconds, can take a two-thirds vote?
But, Mr. Chair.
Any discussion?
Do we have enough of people here for two-thirds?
As long as everybody votes in your third affirmative, yes.
Five is two-thirds of nine. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This was, uh, this, this item, number 32, as well as, uh, through 35 were all considered at, uh, general government and unanimously approved.
We don't have a quorum. Six is.
We have the two thirds. We have a quorum, we just have to have six.
No, I don't.
Jasmine can.
Yeah, we have six. What are you talking about? I'm sorry. One more time, I, we were arguing over what two-thirds was.
I, I, the items 32 through 35 were considered at general government, um, on the 28th and unanimously approved, all items.
Fully noted, we won't have to read them every time. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Counsel, then Counselor Daniels.
Just a quick question, since I, I wasn't at this meeting, I apologize. Just, um, is this something that, you know, a bill that hadn't been paid or just kind of a?
They have not been paid since, uh, 2021. Uh, we had reviewed Amazon, there were some outstanding imbalances. We did a review of all Amazon's accounts. We have changed the way we do Amazon. Um, these were outstanding and found and needed to be paid. So let's, uh, work through the Christine's office, uh, the town accountant, um, our office.
Do we know why, just kind of oversight?
I have no idea, they go back to 2021, I wasn't here, so I can't answer why.
Part of the turnaround plan in the Finance Department.
Thank you.
Counselor Daniels?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. It's my understanding that according to, uh, Robert's Rules, uh, Chapter 44, Section 7, that it's two-thirds of those present. So we're way, way okay.
I think we were thinking that five, because we started the meeting with five, so somebody thought it was five. It's six, we got six, we're good.
Yep.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call?
Counselor Shenier.
Yes.
Counselor Daniel.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Lazo.
Yes.
Counselor Montagni.
Yes.
And Counselor Rivas.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to 33. Vote that the town of Southbridge accept General Law, Chapter 59, Section Clause 21221, which authorizes an annual increase in the amount of the exemption granted under General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22, Clause 22A, Clause 22B, Clause 22C, Clause 22E, and Clause 22F, by the percentage increase in the US government, excuse me, in the US Department of Labor, Bureau of Labor Statistics, Consumer Price Index, C, CPI, for the previous year as determined by the Commissioner of Revenue, to be effective for our, uh, excuse me. Oh, where did I leave off, here we go.
Applicable exemption.
Applicable exemption granted for the, for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Is a motion to second, discussion. No discuss, discussion, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous, of all present. Moving on to 34, vote that the town of Southbridge accepts, uh, General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 221, which authorizes an annual increase in the amount of the exemption granted under the General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22, Clause 22A, 22B, 22C, 22F, and Clause 20, and Clause 22F, by 100% of the personal exemption amount, subject to the conditions of Clause 221, to be effective in applicable exemptions granted for the any fiscal year beginning and, and/or July 1st, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. My father was a disabled vet. He was a POW, he was wounded in action, shot down out of the skies over Belgium during World War II. And it's about time that we take care of our veterans going back. There aren't too many World War II veterans left, but there are definitely Korean War veterans, Vietnam veterans, and veterans of the most recent conflicts that the country has gone through. I can't say enough about this. For, uh, Mr. Adams bringing this forward to us, I wholeheartedly support the previous item as well as this item. It's about time. So thank you, Mr. Adams.
Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, just the quick question, Clause 22I and Clause 22J is better known as the Heroes Act 2, right? Okay, all right, just for the public's, uh, uh, knowledge there. Because it's been talked about a lot here in the last couple of meetings as the Heroes Act. Uh, just wanted everybody to know if, unless I'm mistaken, Mr. Adams, this is the adoption of the Heroes Act?
Uh, it is part of the Heroes Act.
Yeah.
The Heroes Act was huge, all the way across.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just, I, I think it is important to clarify for the public what, what the, what the, both of these provisions are. And these are tax exemption, property tax exemptions for, um, veterans, disabled veterans primarily. I'm wholeheartedly in support of this as a veteran myself and knowing people who have been injured in more recent conflicts. This is, uh, uh, this is, I think, a no-brainer for us. It's, it's not a lot of money. It's a drop in the bucket really, uh, as to what our, uh, can, when you consider our overall property revenue. So I'm wholeheartedly in, 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 wholeheartedly in support of this. I ask you all to support it, thank you.
Any further discussion? I would just like to thank, um, Dave Adams, uh, and the Veterans Council. I know that it was, uh, one of the top things that you wanted to get done. And I think that this proves that, you know, the council and this town is behind their veterans. And we're proud to have you as a representative from the Veterans Council. And, uh, moving forward, you've always been on the, on the point of every veteran's issue. And I thank you and Keith and Memorial Day and, and it just keeps growing. And it's a tribute to you and your support staff, uh, at the Veterans Council. And thank you very much. Any further discussion? If none, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous, of all present.
Mr. Chair, I just want to thank the town council for supporting this unanimously. We, we appreciate on behalf of the, the whole Veterans Council. And also, just to clarify too, it's just not the veterans. It would be also their spouses, uh, surviving spouses as well that would receive this. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous, of all present. Moving on to 35. Vote to designation of the following positions within the Recreation Department as special municipal employees pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 1N, all part-time seasonal summer staff positions, including but not limited to summer recreation program staff and the part-time summer recreation program director's position. These positions are part-time and/or serve on a seasonal and limited basis. And such designation will allow the flexibility in service while maintaining compliance with the Commonwealth, Commonwealth's Conflict of Interest law.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, discussion. No discussion, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous, of all present. Moving on to 36, vote to declare the mobile decontamination unit trailer from the Fire Department as surplus equipment and allow the town manager to do dispose of the item per the town's policy and procurement on the deposit, disposition of the surplus equipment.
So moved.
Second.
Is a motion to second, discussion.
This was passed unanimously at subcommittee.
Now this is going to go to surplus auction?
Yeah, it will go through the surplus, uh, process, yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed, unanimous, of all present. Moving on to number 37, review amending the Southbridge zoning bylaws. Vice Chairman?
Thank you very much. 8.10 accessory dwelling units, 8.10.1 Massachusetts State Regulations, accessory dwelling units shall be allowed in compliance with 760 CMR 71.00 as from time to time amended. 8.10.2 use schedule. As per MGL, Chapter 40A, Section 1A, an accessory dwelling unit ADU is defined as a self-contained housing unit inclusive of sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities on the same lot as a principal dwelling, subject to otherwise applicable dimensional and parking requirements that, one, maintains a separate entrance either directly from the outside or through an entry hall or corridor shared with the principal dwelling sufficient to meet the requirements of the State Building Code for Safe Egress. Two, is not larger in gross floor area than half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. And three, is subject to such additional restrictions as may be imposed by a municipality, including but not limited to additional size restrictions and restrictions or prohibitions on short-term rental as defined in Mass General Law, Chapter 64G, Section 1. ADUs are allowed as a matter of right in any zoning district where single-family residential dwellings are permitted as an allowable use, including any zoning district where single-family residential dwellings are allowed as of right or by special permit subject to requirements of this section. Only one ADU is allowed as a matter of right on any property. Additional ADUs may only be allowed with the issuance of a special permit by the planning board pursuant to Section 2.5 of the zoning bylaw. ADUs may not be used as short-term rentals as such term is defined in General Law, Chapter 64G, Section 1, or otherwise rented for a period shorter than 31 days unless approved by special permit. 8.10.3 Dimensional Requirements. An ADU may no longer be in gross floor area than one-half of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling unit on the property or 900 square feet, whichever is less. ADUs shall comply with any and all lot area frontage setback height and lot coverage requirements as may be applicable to single-family homes or accessory structures as contained in Table 2 in Section 5.1 of the zoning bylaw. The requirements for a given ADU shall comply with whichever are more generous in a given district, single-family homes or accessory structure standards. 8.10.4 Parking. One off-street parking space must be provided for all ADUs not located within a half of a mile of a transit station. Parking may be in a driveway or garage. 8.10.5 Site Plan Approval. All ADU applicants are required to provide a site plan to the Building Department. Pursuant to the procedures in Section 2.6 of the zoning bylaw, the Building Department may recommend an application to Planning Board for site plan review. Planning Board's site plan review criteria shall be limited to the following. One, recommendations that the ADU minimize tree, vegetation, soil removal, and grade changes. Two, recommendations that the architectural style be compatible with the existing principal dwelling on the subject property. Three, the ADU shall be serviced with adequate water supply and sewer or Three, the ADU shall be serviced with adequate water supply and sewer or septic service. Four, the plan shall demonstrate adequate parking as required hereunder. The Planning Board may request reasonable plan modifications of the site plan for an ADU and may impose reasonable conditions that are not inconsistent with this bylaw or the provisions of General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 3. 8.10.6 Relationship to Nonconformities. If an ADU is proposed for a pre-existing nonconforming primary residence, the requirements of Section 6 of this zoning bylaw shall apply, provided that no special permit may impose conditions on an ADU in this case. And that is the second reading, June 2, 2025.
Second reading is being completed. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 38, Counsel's Forum. Counsel Daniels?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Counsel Shenier?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I just want to thank you, Chairman, and Counselor John Daniels for trying to assist the people at Lebanon Hill Housing with the state rep, John Massey. We had a meeting on Friday with the owners of the development, and we're waiting to see where we're going to stand with this. In this particular time, I'm not optimistic that it's going to be a huge success, but we did agree to keep the doors of communication open, and hopefully we can move forward with the help that these people need. Again, thank you, Mr. Chair and John.
I thank you very much for the comment, but Counsel Shenier, if it wasn't for you, it would have never came to the forefront. You live in, in the project. I'd just like to inform the people that we are making efforts, and we're trying to come up with some creative ideas. But Thursday, we're meeting with Gustafson, the Secretary of Housing, and thanks to State Representative Massey, and we're going to be meeting with them to try and hammer it out. It's a sad day in Massachusetts when the funding source for elderly doesn't seem to be there, but the funding source for migrants seems to be in the millions. I remember back when they built the High Rise, built Tressafark, built TAG strictly for elderly housing. I thought it was a great concept. It worked great, and then the regulations changed where anybody can get into the elderly housing if they have a disability and they have other criteria. They opened it up to basically just anybody with a voucher. So moving forward, we're still not dead in the water, so to speak, but we're going to be meeting on Thursday. I just want you to know, we're going to, we're going to keep pushing forward on it. And thank you for bringing it forward. Counsel Reavis?
Thank you, through you. I want to first send my condolences and my heartfelt, you know, my heart goes out to, to the family of Aria Lebo, middle school student who passed recently in a tragic accident. And I'm hoping that the family gets information and gets closure. Aria was in our after-school program at West Street when I ran the 21st Century Program, and we remember her as this vibrant and just happy-go-lucky little girl who brightened every Wednesday, and so my heart goes out to the family. I wanted to also mention that as part of the Town Manager Substance Abuse Task Force, I attended the opioid abatement conference on Tuesday, and we are working to bring all of that information to our respective task force and to the subcommittees on different ideas that other communities and also the, you know, the commission or the group that runs the state part of it that give us examples on how to implement programming and how to utilize that money most effectively to help people in our own community. And so I look forward to working with the rest of the task force to bring those programs and those, those different ideas to make sure our funding is spent wisely and that it helps the most people in our community. I also wanted to talk about, I attended the Pickle Ball Park grand opening at Charlton Street, and it was great to see the group of people who are, you know, in this league participating, and I actually got to play a little bit. I played tennis before, so I don't know all the rules, but it's, it's great to see some, you know, just some great other recreation, you know, activities coming to town. So that was a nice addition to our community at Charlton Street. I also wanted to offer my help to the other counselors and the chair on the housing issue. It's something that I've been working on for a while, and so, you know, there are many different groups and coalitions that I am part of in the community, so I, you know, I'm, I'm here if you need help and, or if you need more information, I'm happy to, to share that information with you. I do think that there are two separate issues. We should be careful about pitting elders against migrants, and, and those two issues are two separate issues that we're dealing with in our, in our communities. And I do think that we, we absolutely have to help our elders and the people who've worked for our communities for a long time, and we all need to work together to do that, but we don't want to conflict those two different issues. I also want to promote some of the amazing programming of Jacob Edwards Library this month, whether it's Pride in Southbridge, they have a meet and greet with Pride artists on Thursday, June 5, from 6:30 to 7:30. They also have a program for Juneteenth with Crocodile River Band on, I'm a date, on Thursday, June 12, from 6:30 to 7:30. And they also have this theater programming that Margaret was really excited about called the Bright Star Theater coming in July that will present The Wizard of Oz and Alice in Wonderland, programming for our, our youth. And so, yeah, I just wanted to mention some of that program. Thank you.
Counsel Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for finally fixing the light at Main Street and Elm. That was a disaster waiting to happen when you were trying to take a left turn from Main Street onto Elm Street. If the light turned green, the crosswalk signal from across Elm Street also went on. So while I was afraid that somebody was going to try to beat the oncoming traffic and wind up plowing into somebody in the crosswalk, so finally that's fixed and, and without have, without, without first having to have a disaster down there. So, so thank you for, for getting that done. Also like to just give, you know, kudos to the Veterans Council for the, for the Memorial Day Parade. I, I was really, really impressed with the attendance at the Memorial Day Parade. It was a really great event. The student speakers were absolutely amazing, and I was very, I was, it was nice to see that the high school band was there, as well as our, as our own police department looking sharp. It was, it was really a well-planned, well-conceived event, so really kudos to the Veterans Council for that. I'm also happy to see, and I think that was a, this is a, hopefully, a, a good omen for the future. The current receiver, Bill Medsger, was in attendance. That's something we have not seen in the town over the last eight years of receivership, where the receiver was actually taking interest, would take an interest in, in the community itself. I think that's a good omen going forward, and, and I look forward to working with Mr. Medsger as we try to move out of receivership. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Memorial Day was awesome. It's great to march in the parade alongside my wife and stepdaughter and all the other counselors. And Counsel Kelly said it, the student speeches were phenomenal. It sounded all very adult, very professional. And Mr. Adams does a great job putting that on, and it was, I think there might have been more people in the parade than on the street, and there were tons of people on the street. The parade is becoming pretty huge, which is awesome. Every year, it gets better and better. Graduation is next on Friday. I believe a lot of us will be in attendance at McManfield for that to wish our seniors good luck. You got June 13th is the fire station groundbreaking. We can finally say that that project is underway. But, you know, June 10th is voting day, and your, your vote matters. We've had some people come up here and talk about how like 7 to 9% of the town comes out to vote and doesn't even hit 10%. Trust me, your voice matters. There's, there's races on the ballot, there's a question on the ballot, and you should go vote because that's one of our rights as citizens of the United States of America. And also, I heard today, a wonderful donation was being made to the Rios, Marcos Rios Park up on Charlton Street near where I'm living. I heard that Gil Provost was going to donate a little bit of plumbing to that project, and I really appreciate that, too. Other than that, I'm glad we got the budget passed, and we have a couple more meetings left to wrap up the year and start the next session, and I hope everybody has a great graduation with all the parties coming up, and stay safe and enjoy the start of summer.
Moving on to Agenda Item 39. Discussion next meeting day, Mr. Vice Chair?
We have Counsel of the Whole, Thursday, June 5, 2025, at 6:00 PM, and the Town Council meeting Monday, June 16, 2025, at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Moving on to 40. Agenda Item Number 40. Adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Shenier, seconded by Montigny. All is in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Motion is adjourned.